All meetings ordered, please rise from the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a little call vote. Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
Alden Coburn and Papsa? Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approval of February 4th, 2025, meeting minutes, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Seven.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to special items, we have none. Appointments to boards and commissions, we have none. Schedule of public comments, we have Kip Beatty, and just a reminder that any public comments need be entered to the city clerk by Wednesday before the meeting. Kip, can you please state your name and your address, please?
Yep, Kip Beatty, 15904 South Palace Edwards Road, Harkspur, Missouri, 65039. All right. Thank you guys for having me tonight to give my annual update of the YMCA. I'll set this out to you guys again beforehand, so I'm sure you guys have probably looked at it. It's very similar to last year. I've kind of gone through and kind of highlighted the things that we've done in terms of our contracts. I'm happy to announce that this year, we now have 1,916 units, which is 4,337 individuals that belong to the YMCA, which are all-time high. We are also now at 10 full-time employees and 50 part-time employees. So looking ahead to this year, like I said, first for this past year, one of the things we're probably most proud of this past year is our bike club program. This is now a program that we established with the high school, or I'm sorry, with the primary school, now having 93 kids in our programs. We house these kiddos at the primary building. We went from 46 to now 93 kids, and we have about 15 kids on the waiting list. So again, as we all know, childcare is a huge need in Southern Boone County. I'm also proud to announce that April 1st, we are opening up our first childcare center for kiddos three to five years old. We've got 20 already enrolled in that, about 20 on the waiting list. So I'm excited to launch this. It'll take place at Park and Faith Church down in the basement. So it's softball, again, with the city. That's been a huge success for us. We had eight teams again this past year, about 100 total players. We're looking at this year, hopefully start a state volleyball league over there as well at the park. Those that don't know, Mitch Bomshin, our sports director, he is leaving us, which is very disappointing for both us three years now almost, and he's done so many great things. He's worked hand-in-hand with James of the city, and he's getting engaged and back home to Kansas. So but we're going to miss Mitch a lot. He's done, again, great things for the community, and we're really going to miss him. So also, we've had our 30 annual giving tree event this year, which is again, part of the school district. We had 15 families. We supported over 130 gifts purchased from YMCA members and staff for those kids and families that cannot afford gifts. Turning the page, looking ahead, our golf tournament again this year, we had a record raised amount of $46,000 for our golf tournament. Again, collaborating with the city and the school district on our cat grant, which we all hope that we start the trail soon, along with the sidewalks and the flashing rapid beacons as well. So talking with James, we hope to hopefully break ground on that here in the springtime, but we're very excited for that and looking forward to it. Another thing I'm proud to announce, again, all of our directors, we also volunteer at the school district and read to kiddos over there. They're looking for mentoring mentors at the school and proudly announce that all of our staff do that as well. Flag football, one of our most popular programs, we had 82 kiddos in that from pre-k to second grade. We have 96 kids in tackle from third and sixth grade. And one thing we're looking at, hopefully this year as well, is the league that we play in, our tackle league. We're looking to maybe start a flag football league for females for fifth and sixth grade. So those that don't know, William Woods now has an all-female flag football team over there. It's a rapid-growing sport, so we're hoping to maybe be a future program for possibly William Woods in the future. Cheerleading and tumbling, those are, again, another two are larger events. We have 65 girls in cheerleading this year. We had 18 girls participated in an Eagles gear, Eagle Cheer stunt competition recently. And then another kind of feather in our cap, Jake, give him that Jake, our health monitor instructor. He's also a huge asset to our YMCA. He's been doing great things. We've got an all-time record high of 160 personal training sessions this past year. We're now also offering hot yoga. We bought heat panels and some really cool color-changing lights in our room, and it's also been a very successful for us. So happy to answer any questions if you guys have any. We have now fulfilled two five-year commitments with the City of Ashland, and I'm also here tonight to put the bug in your ear to try to renew our contract for another five years, starting next year. I was looking to fight it for this year, but in asking for $15,000 a year as opposed to our $12,000 that was. So in the 10 years now, we've had this contract, we went from $10,000 a year for five years to $12,000 for five years, and now I'm seeking hopefully $15,000 over the next five years. Any questions that I can answer regarding contract, the proposed contract? You know, a few reasons for the increase in the ask. As we all know, the wage has gone up. It's went up over 45% since 2020. The money that you guys give us doesn't go towards salaries, but it goes to help with overhead costs. It helps with all the supplies we purchase for our certain programs, but we also have $900,000 still in debt. We're paying down on our current facility, and hopefully in the near future, we start fundraising for our fields. And again, everybody wants a gym and a pool, and we know those are costly, but it's all the money that we're able to get from you guys from the city, you know, is going to a great cause, and we look at $15,000 as a small investment for what we're providing for the City of Ashland.
Any questions for Kip? All right, sir, we appreciate you.
Good. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
All right, on the public hearing, we have none. Introductions and first reading, Council Bill number 2025-03, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Forest Park 2B. Staff report, please.
All right. This is for acceptance of the infrastructure, including streets, water, sewer, and stormwater for Forest Park Platte 2B. All the inspections passed in all the different departments, so it is acceptable, and the board agrees with staff recommendation, the board should accept all of the public infrastructure in Forest Park 2B, thus allowing the warranty period to begin.
So who's able to do all the inspections?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for staff? No? Can I get a motion to approve Council Bill number 2025-03, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Forest Park 2B?
So good.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Council Bill number 2025-04, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the water master plan with McClure Engineering. Staff report, please.
Mr. Eller is in a plow truck right now, helping out, so I'm going to fill in and give his staff report. Before you, you have a proposed contract with McClure Engineering. As you recall, Jeff has previously reported that we did an RFQ process to come up with some potential vendors for this master planning process. McClure was selected. I think we had six total firms submit. We dialed that down to two that we wanted to interview with McClure rising to the top. As a result of that interview process, we've been negotiating with them for the last month on a scope of service to be provided via contract for this master planning process. So before you, you have that agreement. This is actually not going to be the final form. We had some comments from our attorney come in late last week that we provided to McClure to make some updates. Has no impact on the overall cost of the project, just some legalese language that needs to be cleaned up. We do have receipt of that final form contract that is acceptable to their attorney and our attorney. That'll be the one that Doris inks off on at our next meeting, but for the purpose of this, you do have that pre-edited contract in here, which again, none of the legalese changes impact the cost or scope of services, just the protections for both McClure and the city primarily. As we briefly talked in our budget workshop, obviously, we have the street master plan going on right now. We're getting ready to kick off the Water One once the board approves this contract. It'll look at a lot of the same things, where the water utility is currently and where we need to take it to continue to support the growth of the community. Right now, water, you know, of our two enterprise utilities, water's doing great. We don't have any capacity issues or anything like that, but obviously, as the community continues to grow, as we talked about with the street master plan, we need to know where water mains need to go and how big they need to be. So that's really what this master plan will help evaluate. That way, when a development project does come along, we know exactly what size main and where it needs to go to service that project. It'll also look at our tower coverage to determine when we need another tower or if we need another tower. I think when I arrived here, we had a third tower on the water capital improvement plan, but there had been no engineering done to actually stipulate and tell us when and where that water tower needed to go up. So this plan, we'll look at that as well. It'll look at some other water quality type things, where we have water stagnating in the pipe or approaching that level of stagnation just due to the draw on that pipe, if we need to flush those sections of town more frequently, or if we need to loop something to make sure that water isn't stagnating in the pipe, it'll look at that as well. And then obviously, the GIS layer, that's the most important tool that we're trying to develop out of these master plans, is that GIS information to help our guys work more efficiently in the field. You know, when they're going out and fixing a water main now, if we have a water main break, sometimes they know where that valve is at, sometimes they don't. Sometimes that valve is finicky, and it needs to be turned a certain direction, a certain number of times in order to work properly. So that GIS layer data helps them access that information faster than, you know, coming back to the shop and looking at paper notes or pulling out paper maps. They'll be able to, with the tablet they have, pull up that GIS data and know exactly where a valve is at and how it needs to be turned in order to turn off sections of town when they're out there repairing things. So that's what we have before you. The contract price is proposed at $125,000. They anticipate a nine-to-12-month window to provide that master plan. They are in a position to start immediately once approved. McClure does have an office in Columbia, but they'll also be drawing on some of their water staff from their KC office, as well as their Des Moines Metro office. So they're bringing a pretty good team. I think that's what really made them stand out from the other firms that submitted is just the level of expertise they're bringing from the water perspective. They've done a number of large-scale master plans for various municipalities. The staff they're bringing out of the Des Moines Metro just did a Des Moines Metro-wide water analysis to determine how to provide water service to the entire metro, so not just Des Moines, but the other one and a half million people that live in that surrounding area for the next 40 years. So wealth of knowledge that they're bringing to the table, so we're excited to be working with them on this project.
Any questions for staff? And we get a motion to approve Council Bill number 2025-404, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with, contract for wastewater plan with McClure Engineering.
Sorry. So good.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
And Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Moving on to O business. Orders number 1498, an ordinance approving the subdivision plat for Forest Park 2B.
Okay. Just as a refresher, this is the second read for Forest Park final plat 2B. This is a final plat 2B. It will consist of 19 lots of single-family homes, ranging in size from .25 acres to .44 acres. It will also include 1 5.77 acre common lot known as C3, intended for stormwater detention. This phase is just southeast of Platte 2A, basically extending Congaree Drive further south. So obviously, staff recommends approval. The developer appears to have met the intended requirements set forth in the city code, and as of the first reading, the infrastructure has been inspected and ready for approval.
Any questions for staff? All right. Orders number, again, a motion to approve, orders number 1498, an ordinance to approve the subdivision plat Forest Park 2B.
So good.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Orders number 1499, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Liberty Landing North, Phase 1 through 4.
Okay, this is the second read for this one, and this is Phase 1 through 4. Everything excluding the detention basin for stormwater on lot 117B. So the board agrees with staff recommendation. The board should accept a public infrastructure system in Liberty Landing North, phases 1 through 4, thus allowing the warranty period to begin.
All the inspections are done and passed?
Correct.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion approving, orders number 1499, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Liberty Landing North, Phase 1 through 4?
So good.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Orders, orders number 1500, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Forest Park 2B.
This is the second reading of Forest Park 2B, and with the final plat at the first reading, staff recommends approval.
Nothing changed last night.
We get a motion approving, orders number 1500, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Forest Park 2B.
So good.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis? Alden Bochard?
Aye.
Alden Bravenscrap?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Wilson?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Got it. One time. Moving on to business. Resolution 2025-5, a resolution regarding Southern Boone School's site plan.
Okay. This is a request by Southern Boone Schools for site plan approval for the Southern Boone High School, submitting firm as profit engineering consultants. Christine Lubert of Lubert Engineering performed a review. This subject parcel totals approximately 42.97 acres, and obviously, everybody knows where it is. At the north end of Crump Lane. Address is 14520 South Crump Lane. In April 2024, Southern Boone County, R1 School District received voter approval for funding to expand the existing high school. The submitted site plan for the VoAG high school addition focuses on the northern half of the high school campus. There is a new concrete drive to be added to the north of the existing gravel drive on the north side of the school. This will lead to a proposed concrete parking lot on the east side of the proposed addition. There will also be new concrete replacing the pre-existing gravel lot on the backside of the gym. A new stormwater detention facility will be added directly north of the new addition near the creek. As part of the site plan application, a traffic impact analysis is required. There was a board of adjustment hearing for a variance to this requirement in December of last year. The variance from the TIA requirement was not granted. There was also a discussion with city staff about a public sidewalk that was being required along South Crump Lane. It was concluded that since the city was installing a new pedestrian crossing as part of a grant, it would be permissible to delay the construction of the required walk. The school district anticipates an additional bond measure and facility expansion in 2027. Extension of the South Crump Lane sidewalk would be required as part of the 2027 expansion project. Should the school district fail to advance the 2027 expansion project, this sidewalk will be required to be installed within three years from the date of board approval of this site plan. Staff recommends conditional approval of the proposed site plan as the expansion of the high school is necessary with the continued growth of the Ashland community. It is recommended that the conditional approval be granted subject to satisfying city code requirement of a traffic impact analysis before occupancy is granted. It is further recommended that the required South Crump Lane sidewalk be omitted from this site plan, submittal, and subject to the following conditions. Either it be part of the 2027 project, or it be completed within three years of the VoAG site plan approval by the board. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the aforementioned conditions.
The planning is only having concerns?
Yes, there were concerns about the traffic study not being done before the site plan or with the site plan application being submitted.
So on the recommendations on here for the sidewalk completion, those kinds of things, is that staff and planning and zoning's recommendation, or is that something that has been floated to the school and potentially agreed upon?
It was discussed, well, the sidewalk was discussed with profit engineering, and...
The traffic study will be by separate action of the board. So the condition that you would attach to it would be site plan approval and occupancy conditional on subsequent action of the board altering, action yet to be determined.
Yeah, so that's my question, is like, what technically are we voting on here? Like, does it, do we have to state the specific exclusion or requirement at a later time?
I'm trying to pull up that specific resolution to how we currently have it worded in the packet here.
The argument for the sidewalk project was that a lot of that would have to get torn up if they were required to put it up now, when they start their crosswalk and all that.
Yeah, here's the language. As it sits in the resolution right now, obviously, you guys can use this as necessary.
But so if we approve the resolution, does that stick with it?
Yeah, that would be the binding action of the board.
Okay.
The language in the resolution.
So it can be approved without specifically calling it out? Because I believe that that's, I mean, if they're agreeable with that, I think that's a reasonable compromise between...
So this is not the end-all-be-all with regards to traffic impact analysis. There will be, like I said, additional action of the board, once we have...
But this would be binding to the sidewalk.
Something actionable from the city attorney. We'll come back with additional action.
When do we expect that action to occur?
Eminently. We'll have a report underclosed to go in more detail. As it stands right now, obviously, as you all are aware, they applied for a variance. That variance was denied by the Board of Adjustment. That is their final recourse with regards to traffic impact analysis. So quite frankly, the only thing that can be recommended by P&amp;Z is what is here, complete a traffic impact analysis. That's the only thing they have the authority to recommend at this point, or deny. And at this point, they have recommended with conditions. You are empowered to accept, modify, table, deny.
And the conversation with the engineer, he sounded positive about the traffic study at the planning and zoning meeting.
Well, that's their engineer.
Their engineer.
Yeah.
Their engineer.
What did our engineers say? Do a traffic study.
Regardless.
That's all she can say. That's what code requires.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this as written.
Second. So we gotta make a motion to accept Resolution 2025-5, Resolution Regarding Southern Boone School Site Plan. We have a first and a second, and we can do it all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Resolution 2025-6, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a striping machine. Oh, yeah, baby.
I'll be handling this report this evening. Resolution 40 is authorized purchase of a striping machine. We've spent the better part of a year trying to track down a striping machine. We did a formal bid process. We received no bids. We went and looked at striping equipment at various other public works facilities. We went down to Horseshoe Bend. They have a number of different pieces of equipment and a lot of road miles that they stripe in-house, so we're able to somewhat demo their equipment, but more or less just get some positive user feedback on a few different models. Went down to O.C.A.'s Beach and looked at a couple of different models. During those conversations, we determined that the initial piece of equipment that we were eyeballing wasn't going to fit the bill and do what we needed it to do, so that's why you see the increased potential cost here tonight. But in addition to that, we learned that Diamond Vogel does some pretty good deals on these particular pieces of equipment. Since we've done that bid process and we received no bids, we're able to go out and pursue direct quotes at that point. Before you have four different quotes. Diamond Vogel's lowest quote, Matt 26,650. We're able to get that equipment pretty quick. They have it in the warehouse in the KC Metro. So once we're able to ink an order, we would get that fairly quickly, put us in a good position to do some striping once the weather improves. With regards to budget, we'll be shifting some money around. That dump truck purchase that we made from the county came in under budget, so there is some money that can be adjusted for this specific purchase out of that Streets Capital equipment line. And that's really where we're at with it. We're, like I said, been beating our head against the wall for a year trying to get a piece of equipment in here so that we can do some of this striping.
Is there anything else needed? Like, I mean, if this shows up, like, is it game on kind of thing, or like, is there stencils or...
Special training needed?
Well, you know what I mean, for like...
No, so I mean, we've rented equipment. We've used equipment, so we have general knowledge of how to do it. I think the intent will be is we'll do some user training, ideally with Horseshoe Bend Special Road District. Like I said, they have multiple pieces of this exact piece of equipment. They do a really good job with it. They've, there's some user fine tuning that needs to occur, so our goal is probably reach out to them and either do some onsite training here or go down there for an afternoon. They have a very large fenced-in asphalt yard where they just fine tune and practice with these pieces of equipment, so it might be just as simple as to go down there in their practice yard and play around, but...
Is that going to coincide with the fishing season?
In Missouri, fishing season doesn't end.
I may have this, what's the lifespan on this equipment?
Basically, in perpetuity, as long as you take care of it. So it's, they have little Honda motors on them. Those would be the things that you would replace, and those are not hard to replace. I think the one that Horseshoe Bend's running, they've had for 12 years on their one piece of equipment. So as long as we take care of it, and that would be the intention, they'll last a long time. The thing to point out here, and I think we had this discussion during the last budget season when we were talking about the need for a striping machine, it's really hard to get contractors to come do the work, and when they do come do the work, it's very expensive to do the work. And I mean, if you look down, Henry Clay, the associated crosswalks down there around Liberty and Henry Clay, that stuff's already worn off, and it's been there under a year at this point, maybe a little over a year. And we spent this much to have them come and do that effectively. So, you know, if we're able to get this piece of equipment in-house, keep Street Department fully staffed, chip away at doing this in-house, it'll, it'll be a pay-it-forward type situation for us on this piece of equipment. I know it's going to be a silly question, but what does the machine look like? I'll say miniature Zamboni, because it's more or less set up. I won't say mower, because it doesn't really look like a mower, but you sit on the back of it. It's got a couple Honda motors on it, some five-gallon drums to hold paint.
So you ride rather than push it?
Yeah.
You don't want to walk behind it.
I saw one in GSC where the guy was standing, it was like, chchchchch.
Well, that's what I wanted, like, to do, like, turn signal arrows.
If you do fine detail, you take the gun off and you can spray the fine detail.
Like, is there like a guide for doing turn signal arrows and stuff like that, or are you just pretty much...
We have to buy the stencils to do that specific stuff.
See, who was making fun of stencils?
But this machine can do that.
Yeah, wrestling team.
Wrestling, yeah. Wrestling, okay.
He could do it for a fundraiser. But yeah, somebody went straight through the turn, the other, you know, the two lanes here that haven't been painted. Somebody went straight from the second lane, which because there's no markings, if you haven't been through there before, you probably have no idea.
Yeah, so when we reach out to folks to try and get contracted work, really, they only have interest in doing long lines. So long line is doing that center dash all the way down, up or down the stretch. They don't want to come just do Henry Clay between Liberty and Broadway. They want to do every street in town when they want to come do work. It's just not cost-effective for them to mobilize. So it's, it's hard to get work, and we do, when we do get work, it's expensive. The turn arrows and stuff like that, it's really hard to find people to do that specific work, especially when we're talking one intersection here and there. But if we're able to get the stencils, stencils last forever as long as you take care of them, you know, it'll be a lot easier for us to do that in-house. Once, once the paint's in the machine... Once, once the paint's in the machine, as long as you store it properly, you can leave the paint in there. So it's a piece of equipment that we could have more or less in a ready position to go out. And, you know, if we have fair weather and not a lot of other work going on to go touch up some stencils here and there. Obviously, the parking on Broadway, that's ours to maintain, the striping on it. So we'll have to kind of restripe that. Parking in our parking lots worn off, we'll be able to restripe that. Just a lot of added benefit once this is here and up and running.
Sounds good. I'm going to motion to approve Resolution 2025-6, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a striping machine. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-7, a resolution approving the estimate with Schuler Construction for fiscal year 2025 curb and gutter repair project. Oh, yeah.
So we just talked about this during the Streets Budget Workshop. I know we've been chasing this cooperative contract with Pol County for a while now. Surprisingly and thankfully, Mr. Schuler of Schuler Construction is on that co-op agreement. So we've been in contact with Mr. Schuler about doing some work for us. Looks like before you, you have $49,000 allocated for curb and gutter repair. I don't have an extensive list of what sections of curb are being replaced there. But again, we're using the benefit of this co-op contract, so we don't have to bid it out ourselves. That gives us a level of competitiveness on those prices and allows us to work through this approval process fairly quickly. But obviously, once this resolution is approved, we'll get in touch with Mr. Schuler and get an idea of when he envisions starting.
Sounds good. Any questions for staff? I'm going to motion to approve Resolution 2025-7, a resolution approving the estimate for the Schuler Construction for fiscal year 2025 curb and gutter repair project.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Resolution 2025-8, a resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment for the wellhouse for water department.
All right, so SCADA equipment. For those that are not aware, SCADA is the computer assisted programming system that manages everything to do with water treatment, administering chemicals to clean the water, turn-on pumps here and there. We have SCADA systems throughout town, operating wastewater treatment plant, water treatment, water towers, you name it. They all have various SCADA systems on them that just help automate some of those work functions. This was budgeted for Water Fund for capital improvement projects for this fiscal year. Been back and forth with Jeff on what he wanted to do here. So currently, right now, we do not have this particular SCADA offering, this mission control. We don't have that in the water tower currently. I don't know what the current offering is, but we do have mission control across the wastewater division. So the goal here is to standardize, which is why you see a direct quote from Hydrokinetics for these mission control pieces of equipment. They're the sole source provider for mission control. Mission control and all SCADA systems, they generally have a dialer system where, you know, if a pump faults or anything like that, it'll send out a text alert, phone alert, et cetera, to let somebody know something's wrong and they need to promptly go check it out. It also has a web-based platform that does much of the same. So obviously, by transitioning everything over to one system, we don't have 15 different apps on our phone or 15 different calls coming out. It's all managed through one system, just kind of improving the efficiencies of our ability to respond. Right now, we have, you know, an on-call phone that rotates amongst those public works guys, and that's generally what wakes them up at 2 o'clock in the morning is a pump fault call out through mission control on the wastewater side of the house. So now they'll get the pump callouts for both water and sewer on that call-out phone. This doesn't include labor. Jeff will be putting out the labor for bid. We did receive a quote from Hydrokinetics to do parts and labor. The labor component is above our bidding threshold, so Jeff will put that out for bid. We don't expect many responses on there, but just to follow our purchasing requirements, we will put that out for bid. Jeff will also have some other just general electrical repair work scheduled as part of that bid as well. But before you, this is just the equipment purchase to allow him to move forward. It looks like we'd be coming in right at or below budget on all this SCADA stuff that was programmed in the FY budget. So that's what we have. SCADA is kind of a confusing thing to talk about if you don't know what SCADA is and have no experience with it. But long and short of it, computer assisted program to help keep things running.
Any questions for staff? All right, I'm going to get a motion approving Resolution 2025-8, a resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment for the wellhouse for water department.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Mayor's report, all that I have tonight is on Monday, the 24th. We have a Park Board Master Plan presentation. So if you're available to come by and check it out, they have some great renderings of the new park site. So please come by. City Attorney's report?
Underclosed.
Got it? City Attorney's not here. City Commissioner replaced the City Attorney's.
I'm sorry. I do have a report.
Chamber Dinner this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. Did anybody that wants to go RSVP for that?
I think I did.
Okay.
I think I RSVP'd, but I can't come.
I will ask. Doris already mentioned the Park Workshop. We also have scheduled the first City Social. We're not calling it Coffee with the City because they're not always going to be during the coffee hour. This first one is going to be Wednesday, February 26, 5:30 at Woody's. At a minimum, you'll have Doris and the chief there. I need to check my wife's work schedule to make sure I can be there and not have to bring two very small children with me.
They're allowed.
We also have, I know Doris has talked about this a number of times, the desire to do some entrepreneurial type workshops. We do have that workshop scheduled from March 19th at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Southern Boone Economic Development Council and the Chamber are kind of going to handle the sponsorship of that and help set it up and get it off the ground. The goal for that workshop is just education. A lot of folks in Southern Boone don't realize that there are entrepreneurial resources available. Obviously, they're not necessarily city resources. They're offered through Ready, which is the countywide economic development authority. So just making sure that Ready is down here and has an opportunity to educate potential entrepreneurs on what services are available to them. We also have scheduled the Southern Boone Economic Development Council Leadership Breakfast. That's Thursday, April 17th at the Optimus Club. Auburn Bell will be emceeing again. Trash is pushed back one day this week due to the weather, at least one day. They may call us tomorrow, but as of now, everything's pushed back one day. As we talked about under the budget workshop, the logger supplemental benefit analysis has been posted to the website. We've talked about it in the workshop. It's just a reminder that the city is proposing to transition from an L7 defined benefit plan to an L6 plan as part of the FY '26 budget, which should bring the lifetime benefit total from 1.5% of that average final five years of salary to 2%. So that data is available on the website for review, but the intention would be to program that into the FY '26 budget. With regards to snow removal ops, they are on their 12-hour shift rotations. They just switched at around 7:00 o'clock-ish, I believe. So they will stay in that posture until this stops and roads are cleared. And that is all I have. Thank you, sir. Police Chief Muffin report that went out via email. Scott is at a Garth Brooks concert in Las Vegas.
Community Development Directors report.
I got nothing to add other than what was in your package.
Sounds good. Moving on to treasures, Muffin report.
My report included the renewal for our city medical, dental, vision, and life insurance. Our medical insurance roughly went up 7.43%. And the only thing that really changed on it was the copays for pharmacy. We're really happy with our policy. Anthem has done really well with us. And that's just an estimate percentage, I mean, based on the number of staff we had at the time they did our renewal. And then for our voluntary dental, that went up less than $2 for the employee. They're averaging an about 4% increase. But again, really good policy. We haven't had any issues with it. And it's also based on those that are enrolled in it. It's a voluntary program.
Who's that, ma'am?
Kansas City Life. Our life and ADA benefit that we offer our employees did not go up. It will be the same price next year for our renewal. And then our vision plan, which is a VSP, went up 15 cents. Additionally, our city liability casualty auto insurance renewal will increase 25% or more for fiscal year '26. And then our next work session on March 4th will be all our enterprise funds and the capital funds. And then we can wrap everything up on the 18th as far as what it's finally going to look like and then do everything on the April 1st and be done.
Thank you. Moving on to Board of Alvin Bell card.
No report.
Auburn Ray card?
No report.
Auburn Bell?
No report.
Auburn Wilson?
No report.
And Auburn Hook.
No report.
All right. General comments from the public?
This isn't an alderman report. We're having the Boots and Boes event on Saturday. If you haven't purchased your tickets for your elementary and primary age daughters, you should get them now.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
Is there a cutoff time date for that?
Not really, but it helps if you bought it by like Friday. Also, Room 5107 will be doing the DJing in any event graciously. It's doing all the decor and donating, and the money raised goes back to the schools and the PTA.
It's really a cute little event.
We're going to have them.
All those girls just get up. They're so cute.
Oh, and the dads are even.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I think my son-in-law waited too late last year to get them.
All right, well, you have my phone number.
Okay.
All right, then. Can I get a motion to vote to go into closed session pursuant to Chapter 610-021 legal actions and firing and hiring this...
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Auburn Lewis?
Aye.
Auburn Wilson?
Aye.
Auburn Bell?
Aye.
Auburn, Auburn Ray card?
Aye.
And Auburn Bell card?
Aye.
We are going to close session, please.
The hair like blows back in your face when you turn the corner. It's not my favorite weather.
Hey, it's gonna be in the 50s next week. We gotta make it through like Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
You know when it's 50 degrees outside and it's actually like 70 degrees warmer than it is right now? That's a bad sign.
We went to the Y this weekend and Chris is like, "It's so cold." I'm like, "It's 26. That's like double what it's gonna be tomorrow." You better enjoy 26 while you got it.
All right, we're back in the open session and at this time we have nothing to report. I get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry?